I know we have two of these. And the other one is for thirty eight thousand dollars. Eight hundred twenty and ninety cents. Do you want to just go through some of that with us, Chuck?
Sure. Well, the first one for ten thousand six hundred and sixty is the is the winding down of of things, and it's that last. Change order that was approved last meeting and just a few other minor things which. You know, all of that work has been done. And then the last one, the thirty eight thousand eight hundred and twenty is the holdback as as is all commercial contracts of. Of a percentage until completion. And again, our architects. And William Height have walked through and and. You know, although the project is complete and done as as agreed, so. I'm fine with these payments.
Okay, any questions? Any questions?
So they're done there, right, Chuck? They're 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 the project.
Down and out of there.
Anything?
No, I think the, I mean, it looks great. It's been getting a lot of use. It really is a. A gem for the community. So I mean, it it really turned out really well. So no, thanks for everything.
Yeah, I went by the other day. The pool was full. There were people playing tennis. There were people playing pickleball. It just was a good feeling.
Yeah, I saw, yeah, baseball around the baseball diamonds pitching. Yeah, it's nice. Yeah.
Good to see it being used.
The blacktops, one complains, just way too black. Just kidding.
For the past. I don't know. I'll say at least at least four years, if not further more, we've all we've struggled. With the bathrooms in baseball and and tried putting in a temporary door with that would lock from one side to the other and 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 finally, we got the. The bathrooms done and hopefully that issue is over.
Good. Thank you for your efforts. If there are any other questions, that will move on to the composting program. And Joe, you want to just describe what you wanted to do here?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a grant opportunity through the CFA, the state grant program. I I'd mentioned this briefly at a previous meeting. The county has a program where they're. Collecting intending to compost at the Alden jail facility. They there's a probably almost a definite opportunity that we're going to be able to participate in that. I I just reached out to him again. It's just a security issue that the. They have to make sure the county jail feels comfortable with. So it's great. It's it's awesome because I did. Actually, the place where you put the compost is is the biggest thing. So the idea, as we discussed previously, is to start a pilot program residential. Get X number of people, maybe twenty people that are interested. That I actually matter of fact, talking to Dave is next on the agenda for, you know, collect collection point for it. But at any rate. The CFA grant allows us to apply for. The actual materials, maybe the totes, possibly a trailer, yada, yada, yada. Most grants require some sort of matching, but this one is unique in that volunteer. Hours can count towards the matching contribution by the town. And I've I've had many people, I'm afraid I just got an email right now. People are eager to participate in this, so I think we'll have no problem meeting that matching. Part with volunteers through the ACES program, through the Climate Smart Community Task Force. We already have a good reservoir. So what's going to be on the agenda on our regular meeting is the approval to go ahead and then submit the grant application. We're also not paying anyone to do the grant. Sue Russell. With ACES, a board member in ACES is going to take a crack at it, take a crack at her first grant. I'll help her with it and we'll we'll get in there. So essentially, it's no cost to the town. And hopefully, we'll get some totes, some large totes, some counter size for people to use, and hopefully a trailer to get our stuff over to Alden.
How how does it get there, Joe?
So that's what I have to talk to Dave. He wasn't here at the last meeting, but we're hoping the highway department can. Because can ferry stuff over once a week or once every other week. It's not going to be a terribly large amount of materials, so.
And in the meantime, these totes are going to be picked up at resident. I mean, I.
No.
I've read of this, so I don't really know any of the details.
So it's it's not all worked out yet, but the idea is is residents would bring their materials to the tote. Where that tote is going to exist, whether a lot of municipalities do it in conjunction with their farmers markets. So you 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 know, she negotiates some space right next to the farmer's market when people are coming to those kind of people tend to also be composters, right? Plus the farmers that are at the market, they can bring the materials there, or we can work with the highway department to potentially get a shed there, which also could be part of the grant. Depending on which way we go, and you just have volunteers sitting there, make sure the right materials that are not getting plastics and things of that nature. What's nice about the county program is a lot of programs don't include meat proteins. Their program does. So we don't even have to be picky about what goes in as long as it's recyclable and it's organic. We're all set.
And and one of one of the, this is sort of a first step in what we could be pursuing, depending on what grants are out there and how we could move forward. But the the town of Ithaca and the town of Saratoga Springs have actually actually since introducing composting. Have gone from one time a week garbage pickup to one time every two weeks. And have saved like forty percent of their garbage costs because all the stinky stuff and garbage is compostable. And so they have a truck that goes around and picks up the compost and these things. And that's saved them costs on their their garbage pickup. So. There's a lot of ways that we can go with this. I think this is a good, important first step where we can hopefully get some funding and try to. Try to move forward with it. Another point is the village, if we could get them, I mean, they have a an employee who sits at the. The what do you call this? The shrub drop off every Saturday from is it eight to two or nine to two? So if we could piggyback with them and use their employees already there, that would help us with the staffing issue right there. So.
Are you looking to get a grant?
It would be through us that we would just then extend to all the town residents.
And and this grant is usually grants for a specific thing. This grant is for what specific?
It's it's for materials that you would need to run a compost program. Totes, exactly. Totes, trailer, shed, possibly. Those are all examples, like how we're going to do it. Like I said, I have to work with Dave to. To talk about what what options we have.
Well, and then and then the county has access to a grant as well that they are hopefully including us in with four municipalities. That would be the grant for actually picking it up and taking it and all all that. So this is one part of it, but the second part is. Something that we would do together with the county, so.
Okay. Dave?
Just I I don't know anything about this, but I I just want to caution you when you're talking about using the highway department. We legally can only work for the residents outside of the town, like the electronics recycling is only for. Those residents, so I don't know what you're doing, but just make sure you know that that.
Yeah.
There's different taxpayers paying for the town highway.
That absolutely makes sense, and you're on the list of contact. I know you're on the town there a little bit, so.
As far as I know, most of this is for resident or restaurants?
No, no, no. This is strictly residential.
Okay, but but I just want to make sure you know you can't open that up to other towns and.
No, 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 absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Even village residents can't.
Oh, really? Village residents would be barred from.
Well, like our electronics pickup that's paid for by the taxpayer outside of the village. Just make sure you know that.
Unless we had a separate funding source, I presume, right?
If it was through the general fund, you could.
Yeah.
But as far as highway fund, I just got to make sure you do that.
We get, we have a lot of.
Same with our rubbish fund, too. That's totally outside of the village.
Okay, sounds good.
Are we going to have to have an agreement with the county for this?
We we're not there yet. Yeah, there'll be some sort of agreement with the county. I just I've been working with the deputy commissioner over there. Of environment and planning, and we're we're not there yet. So eventually, we'll have to have an agreement that'll let us drop our food waste off at the Alden facility.
You have a target date of like maybe this fall?
No, I think this is further out than that. Further. I think we're looking at twenty twenty four, spring of twenty twenty four. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't I don't like. Set the expectation too high. It's going to take a while. I mean, even if so, if we if we enter into this agreement and pursue these funds via the grant. Those don't get announced in November, and by then it'll be too late to get rolling. So, yeah, I know this is going to be a long term thing.
Gotcha. I I think it's a great idea, Joe, and thanks for presum uh. Going after this. But the only thing I probably would want to change is is. Susan is an administrator, not being an employee of the town.
Okay.
I think. You doing it and probably Martha, who was who is our grant administrator. Would be probably better than having someone who is not employed by the town.
Okay.
That's just a. I know we're not there yet, but.
Yeah, I hear you. I I mean, she's wanting to put the hours in, so I guess we can figure out a way that, you know, if it's me entering information that she's. Putting together, and if that makes everybody feel a little more comfortable.
Yeah.
We could certainly make that happen.
I just think your name then should be on it and that.
Okay.
I mean, if she wants to assist you, but. Just a thought. I mean, I know we're not even close to that yet.
Yeah, yeah, we're ways away. I think these are due, though. Towards the end of July, so we're we're getting pretty cloak related for grants writing.
Right, but not for the minister. I mean.
Not, no, not for the rest of it. Yeah, exactly. This was just to give her login access. So if that's if that's going to be problematic, I'm sure we can find that workaround that you just suggested.
Problem. I just I just wonder if it's something we should open up. The door to people that are not employed by the town or elected by the town to be administering a grant.
That sounds good. I can I can see the logic there.
Any other? Discussion on this? Nat, we'll move on to. And this is a request from Elizabeth Cassidy. Erie County Department Environmental and Planning is seeking a letter of support. From the town of Aurora is an MS four coalition member for a grant application. To the New York State DEC for additional stormwater sewer system mapping. Your project will target post-construction stormwater management practices dating back to two thousand and three. In addition to mapping the type of practice and its location, data such as receiving water body. Date of installation, ownership, maintenance, responsibility, agreements in operation and maintenance. Requirements will be collected. New storm sewer areas are any. Sorry, and any other unmapped areas will be mapped as needed. There's a letter of support with this, and it just needs my signature. Did you have anything to add to that?
So this information that the that the coalition has. Compiled over the years shows the individual MS fours. Those areas of concern that we have to look at. So our. Our outfalls and our catch basins that are all mapped, and now they're adding in the post-construction. So this would include any. Stormwater retention ponds similarly over at the at three hundred Glead with the rain garden there. That would that would be classified as one as well. So this just puts it on the the GIS map so that we have that available. And then we can utilize that during our inspections annually.
Any questions from the word? Comments? Thank you. Next, Maple Crossings, we have a request from Belmont to transfer their pilot agreement. And basically, it's just the change of ownership. In the corporation, so they're transferring a pilot that we've already. Established. To make it simple. Any questions, comments on that?
Is this pretty standard? I mean, there's nothing unusual about ownership changing in a facility like this, and us just. Transferring over the pilot agreement. This is the first one I've seen. That's I guess that's the only reason I.
It does. Well, it doesn't happen a lot, but it it's it's a normal procedure, yes.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yep. Who else? All right, next, we have a request from Chuck. The East River Quanis Club would like to clean up and stain the pavilion in the five picnic tables at South Street Pool Park. Is the club's two thousand twenty-three community project. The date for this scheduled is scheduled for July fourteenth and fifteenth. The materials and labors will be supplied to Quanis. And all they're asking is to allow us to hook up a hose somewhere to run a pressure washer. And then the stain will be close to the existing colors. Anything you want to comment on it?
Only that this is done every, well, most years anyway, I'll put it that way, by Quanis. And we just picked a community project and and. Quanis. Works with the town or whomever it has to be, whoever it is, it's not always a town project, but and take care of that ourselves, so.
Very nice.
I'm thinking with the as beautiful as everything looks over there on South Street. That the pavilion could use a little facelift and clean it up a little bit. That'd be that'd be a good thing to get done.
Sounds good. Thanks.
That's the problem with making things pretty, then the thing next to it looks ugly.
That's right.
You're absolutely.
That's why I love remodeling.
That's that's a statement nobody said when Jim and Joe joined the board, just to be clear.
So Luke, we talked about the street.
Yeah, yeah. So so my my apologies a hundred percent. I've been just swamped at work and I've not been able to get to it, but we're in a situation now. And again, that is caused by me where the complete streets policy is not ready to go. But we do need to get that into the the community, the climate smart community task force. Port portal by July seventh. In order to qualify this year to get bronze status. Which I think Supervisor Bach was hoping would be his, you know, at his retirement party, what he'd be talking about the most. So the the question is, do we want to push forward for the bronze status? We would need to have a special meeting. That which we could and and are we able to get it in time, you know, to go through it, look it over? They're non-binding. Most towns have them. It should be fairly easy. And we had discussed about getting it together. I just, you know, haven't been able to get to it. So if we can do that, then that is the last piece. We haven't been able to figure out the website part, so that would have qualified, but that's not there. Joe was working on.
I sent that over today. Did you get it?
Yep, the inventory, and there were some other emails that I I haven't checked yet from Kulashewski about that. So that piece is done. So really, it is the complete streets policy that if we just put our stamp, it's not a local law. We we pass that, we can submit it, and then we do qualify for bronze, which would be announced in September, so.
So it's going to require a local law?
No.
It doesn't?
No, no, it's a policy.
So is that something? You'll have time to?
Yeah, I mean, I've got a I've got a deadline later tonight, which should open me up tomorrow, where I could be able to finish up hopefully tomorrow at some point, maybe not by the. End of the business day, but certainly by the end of the evening. We can get it over. If if we're willing to do it, then I can commit to to getting it in a first draft over tomorrow.
I have no problem with a special meeting. I mean, they they take three minutes. But we do have to let Martha know so she can advertise it and.
Yeah. So we'll work on it and get everything in here someday, some morning, and try to. Get it get on the same page, and if we can do that by whenever, we can have the, how long in advance do we need to set the special meeting?
I remember, you know, the holidays coming up, too, so. What do you need for timing and a special meeting? Forty-eight hours. Okay.
We're going to call you back.
Do you want to pick a day?
We could pick a day now, whatever works.
That's fine by me. Okay.
July fifth?
July fifth.
What what? Yeah, that'll that'll be enough. If I do the first draft tomorrow, we can meet the. If you can meet on like Wednesday.
Yep.
Or Thursday, enough time to look it over. It's only a one pager, I think, is going to.
What's that? Are you able to make July?
Ah, during the day would be tough. I could make it in the evening, but you only need three of you.
So you could be there? Because I'm not sure if if I could make the evening, too, but I don't know about the.
Should we set the evening just to be to be sure, to be sure?
Okay. Like, what time?
Anytime.
Five o'clock?
Five.
Four thirty if you if you want it.
Forty.
Four thirty would be great. So I can make I have another meeting, so I could I can make it to both. That'd be great.
Four thirty? On the fifth, four thirty and the fifth.
My apologies again. I'll bring some coffee.
Four thirty, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Nice.
All right. Anything else? Anyone wants to add to the work session before we go on? If not, we have a public hearing, which I can't do until seven o'clock. We have about ten minutes. So we can go on with the agenda till seven, and then we can open up that public hearing. So we'll go to number two, which is the approval of the minutes. So I have a motion to approve the June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three work session and meeting minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next audience, is there anybody that would like to comment? And any items that are on the agenda? To the board, if you do, please come up to the mic. Give us your name, address, Brad, no? Woody? Okay. You're going to have to skip unfinished business A, and we'll go to. B, the payment request for Peyton Barlow. And payment number one. Which is for ten thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. So I have a motion to approve their payment.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck.
I'll second.
By Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And that is carried. And then payment number two. Which is the final payment of thirty eight thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and ninety cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
I'll second.
Motion by or second by Chuck. Any discussion?
I'd just like to mention that I'd like to thank Peyton Barlow for everything. That they did. They were they were a good company to work with. We ran into a few unknowns, as you always do. In remodeling, and we worked worked it out. With a mutual agreement between us and and everything is done just as the contract specifies, so.
And that boiler fired right up?
And the boiler fired right up.
Nice.
And within, you know, we we had like. Two days to spare, so. Actually, actually, the gas line was the biggest glitch of the whole thing because that was back in October when we first dug. And and it was like. Three weeks before the opening of the pool before they. Re-routed the gas line and tied it in so that they could fire the boiler up. That was. That was close, but.
Yeah, we really should mention Dave and his crew, too. They did a lot of work down there. The paving and in the landscape, and then I I was, like I mentioned before, the tennis courts, the pickleball courts, they were all full the other day. The pool was.
Yeah, those have been hopping. Those pickleball courts.
And the baseball diamonds look good, too. So I mean. Yeah.
Beautiful. Yeah. Looks great.
Good job.
Going to be better, yeah.
Speaking of, did we hear anything? Nothing? Okay. All right. Still got seven minutes. New business, we need to add a couple of. You know, when you try to waste time, takes more time to waste time. You ever notice that?
Yeah, thanks, Rod.
I used to have employees, you know, they'd look at the.
Go do something, and it'll go by faster, you know?
Okay, so a new business. So we have to add a couple of items anyway. So one of the items I put on the desk was the polling lease with the county. So that would be I. And J would be the special meeting July fifth. At four thirty PM. And that's for these. What is that, the street?
I don't know. I don't. I couldn't repeat that noise if I wanted to.
You're going to be all right, Chuck?
Okay, yeah. It was more embarrassing than anything. It was like cough, so.
I know we have an AED somewhere, no? What what is it called? The streets?
Complete Streets Policy.
The Streets. Okay, Complete Streets. So then my the meeting will be on July fifth, four thirty at. Town Hall here for Street Complete Streets. Do I have a motion to add those items to new business?
I'll move. Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed and that is carried. So I just want to make that. Okay. So going on to new business. We have the composting program grant application. And we need a motion to. Do you want to do the motion?
Yeah, looking for a motion to approve. The town of Aurora to apply. For a grant through the CFA program to secure materials to support a municipal composting program.
Then you should add with Susan helping.
With with Sue Russell of ACES helping to complete the application on behalf of the town.
Okay. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Second by Chuck. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next, we have the MS four coalition letter of support. And I need a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign the letter of support.
Removed.
Motion by Jim. Wait a second.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. And it's canceled, carried, not canceled. Belmont. And this is the pilot transfer, and I'll just read this. The partnership. Is the owner of the project, which project is an affordable rental housing development. Subject to payment in lieu of taxes, which is our pilot program with the town of Aurora. Belmont Development Corp. The general partner plans to transfer its ownership interest in the partnership to VEP Buffalo LLC. And that's the substitute general partner. In the connection with such transfer of ownership interest, in accordance with application law, the partnership will file the attached amendment to cert. This certificate of limited partnership with the New York State Department. Of state. So what they're asking is. That we have this pilot. That was approved back. Two thousand seventeen. And they want to continue it. So any questions on that? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And I'll, if I can just add to that motion to authorize the supervisor to sign. So. Motion by Chuck, second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed and that is carried. And next, we have the Quanis project. And this is D, and this is. A project that the president of Quanis is doing for the town. To. The five picnic tables and the the pavilion to stain it, power wash it, clean it, is their. Project for the year, and this would be at no cost to the town. Bless you. Do I have a motion to authorize?
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And that is carried. All right, so we're rounding up to seven o'clock here, so we're going to start this public hearing, and this is about. Eighty-one Hyler Drive and Mr. Bill Button is here. And. This is. Something that's gone to the zoning board and planning board, and it's a variance. To do an ODA at the eighty-one Hyler Drive in East Aurora. This was passed by both. Planning and zoning board unanimously. Are there any questions on before we start the the public hearing? Okay. Right then, we'll start this public hearing. Right at seven o'clock, anyone would like to comment on this project, please come up to the mic, give us your name and address. And that includes the owners, if you would like to speak on it also. Anybody? Nobody? Okay, then we will close the public hearing at seven oh one. Seven oh one. And open it up to discussion for the board?
I I just want to say I I went out and took a look at the property, and I have to say I'm I'm not a. Flaglock guy or ODA guy, but this this is an example of why you have to have some exceptions to your. Hard and fast rules because it doesn't feel like an ODA. It doesn't look like an ODA. It just looks like a house. Next to the other house, it'll it's going to be exactly the same. So I mean, orientation wise. So it's a beautiful piece of property. You guys are lucky to have it, and I think it's going to not negatively. I I don't think it will negatively impact our community when I order.
No, it's it is. A perfect spot for an ODA. a perfect spot for an ODA and, and all the history behind it too. Uh, with your dad and all of that stuff, so I, I'm all for this.
Yep. Okay. Then we'll go uh, to unfinished business. Which is the resolution to approve an open development area. And I'll just read the now therefore be it resolved, the town board, having considered details of the open development area application for eighty-one Hyler Drive, has found that the construction of a single family residence is proposed in the application is considered type two. And therefore, no further review is required pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. And be further resolved, the approval of this open development area by the Town of Aurora Board, and any future development is in, is and will be subject to the standards and requirements of chapter ninety-nine of the code of the Town of Aurora, and be further resolved at the open development area plan. For a single family residence at eighty-one Hyler Drive uh, Town of Aurora is approved in accordance with the site plan permitted and variances granted as attached to this resolution. So do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck. Second by Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And that is carried. You've got your uh, you can go to town now.
Yep.
They're spending some money.
Should've showed up with a tool belt on.
Okay. Five E. And this is the um, Justice uh, uh, Court Act and Coras Town Justice annually provide their court records and dockets to the auditing board of the town. And as such records be examined and the fact be entered into the minutes of the board's proceedings. Good night. So then I'll read the now therefore be resolved that the audit when in examination of the records of the Aurora Town Justices for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two was performed by the auditing firm of Resler Molecki. And be it further resolved that the findings of said audit and examinations were presented to the Town Board of the Town of Aurora. Do I have a motion to accept these findings?
So moved.
Motion by Chuck.
Second.
Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And that is carried. Next, we have a budget amendment. requested uh, from Kathleen Moffett Moffett for funds to the senior center. She respectfully requests approval to amend the budget to record the five thousand dollars received from Erie County for the senior center upgrades is approved at the five, May eighth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. And the amendment is as follows, increase revenue line A, twenty-seven oh six grants from local governments by five thousand. And increase appropriation line A six seven seven two dot four one supplies by four, five thousand dollars. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that is carried. Next, another budget amendment for Mill Road Overlook. Stone and paving material. And this is uh, a request to approve the amendment, amend the budget to record the twenty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-six cents reimbursement received for the paving material for the Mill Road Overlook. The amendment is as follows, increase revenue line A two seven seven zero miscellaneous by twenty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-six cents. And increase, increase appro- uh, appropriation line A, seven one one zero dot four 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 parks and landscaping and supplies by twenty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-six cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Jim.
I'll second.
Second by Chuck, any discussion? I just wanna thank Scott Bueller for donating that money to uh, put their paving down. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And that is carried. Next, we have a couple of donations for the senior center. And this is from Donna. She's asking the town board to accept a donation of one hundred dollars from Claude Lemny in family in honor of Wes Witt. We've been part of our senior center and town resident for many years. At ninety-two, he continues to be an active and vibrant member of the community, and you'd like the money to be placed in the TA one thousand that ninety line. It's another one. Donation of fifty dollars from Maria Burkhardt and family in memory of Don Carroll. She'd like the money to be placed in TA one thousand that ninety. And another one for twenty-five dollars from the Aurora Senior Club in memory of Don Carroll. She'd like the money also go to TA one thousand that ninety. Do I have a motion to approve the donations as listed? So moved. Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And that is carried. Next, we have the I, which is the polling place lease. And uh, these are agreements that we need the supervisor to sign uh, for the two thousand twenty-three uh, primary and general elections for the Aurora Municipal Center, Senior Center and Highway Garage. And the amounts were at our last meeting, right? Martha was like. One hundred dollars, reach location, okay? So I need a motion um, to authorize the supervisor to sign this agreement um, which will be paying a hundred dollars for each location um, to the Town of Aurora. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that is carried. And next we have J, which is the special meeting July fifth at four thirty at Town Hall for the street um.
Complete Streets Policy.
Complete Street. Complete Street. Do I have a motion to approve that special meeting?
So moved.
I'll second.
Luke and Chuck, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that is carried. Next, we have uh, our correspondence and we have the municipal shelter inspection report. And the dog control officer inspection report from the New York State Egg and Markets, and everything was in great order as usual. Next, we go to business from the board members. Luke?
Yeah, not much today, I don't think um. Continue to be with the, the uh, the Climate Smart Community Task Force. We're finishing up the um, Scoot Around June initiative, and I think we'll actually be close to saving a thousand road miles. So people have gone from a car to biking or walking, which is, is pretty good for the first year. So I think that was a, a good success. Um, and then the West Falls group, we are still looking to settle on a date for when the um, application committee can come out to take the tour. So.
Good. Okay. Chuck.
I don't have anything tonight.
Jim?
Uh, a couple of things, but Luke, as far as the application committee, we're just waiting for them to come back to us with the date or time. Okay. Um, cou- a couple of things, uh, one, uh, certainly congratulations to the co-chair of the uh, parade. Uh, or fearless, one of them, well, oh yeah, but, but that's a, that's a great honor and uh, certainly uh, one that certainly well deserved.
Thank you.
Um. The, the second thing is that I did get an opportunity to take a look at the Orchard Park rail trail. It's really uh, it is quite nice, and I think uh, uh, many parts of it could be used as a template for West Falls. West Falls is certainly a different location with different concerns uh, and different proximity to a lot of the properties. Uh, but it's really interesting. I think Deb Finn gave a uh, invite to anybody on the board who wants to go out, she'll take you on a tour of it and show uh, show what is going on with that rail trail and, and what um, you know, one of the, some of the reasons why they, they designed it the way they did. Some of the input that they had for that. Uh, on a semi-personal note, um, uh, Buffalo seven one six named West Falls Center for the Arts, the uh, uh, the, in the top five of best uh, places in Western New York uh, uh, for music venue and the uh, places that beat us out were Darian Lake. Um, Art Park, uh, Sportsman's, of course, but uh,
That's pretty good.
Yeah, but top five and, and all of the seven one six areas, so we're, we're very proud of that. Uh, the next thing is uh, July tenth, I do not think that I'm gonna be here. There is a work conference uh, in Albany. Uh, we do have work sessions uh, at night, uh, but I just wanted to throw that out as well.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
So um, on that point, I may also not be here. I can, should be on vacation at that, on the tenth, but if someone else has to leave, I can leave a little bit later.
I, I should be here.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, July tenth. I mean, I, I'll join in from the internet. I'll just be in Quebec with the cabin, but.
No problem. That's expected. This time of year, there's a lot going on in the summer.
Uh, for mine, I, chief, you'll be interested in this. I did talk, speak to Dave Mumma about the Spooky A project, and he said there aren't any additional participants this year. He's working with folks who had previously decorated their their homes. They're all in the village, so it really takes us out of, takes it out of our jurisdiction anyway. Um, but it, it shouldn't be more houses than there were before, but they are planning on doing the uh, QR code to give the locations of their houses. So I don't, I don't know if you wanna address that with the village or what, but it shouldn't be overwhelming. It's yeah. And uh, no problem. That's all I have.
Yeah. Well, I have a couple of things. Number one, I would like to wish our town clerk a happy birthday. And uh, I'm not. Oh, I did. I did it, but I'm the only supervisor that she has um, that, that is saying, saying to her during a board meeting with my guitar, so I'm not doing it tonight. Don't worry about it. Um, but happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Uh, I was. I just wanted to mention, I, I was able to participate in the ride for Roswell Saturday, and uh, what a great ride. It didn't, didn't rain. Um, if anyone uh, is ever thinking about doing it, you should do it. You, you could do, it's different uh, miles that you can do. You don't have to do the whole thirty. Um, but it's a great cause, you know, for cancer research. And the ride is beautiful, up the canal, uh, right along the canal, right up the river. Um, it's just a beautiful ride, so, and it's pretty flat, so it's pretty easy, so um. And also, I just wanna make sure everyone uh, comes in July third to our parade and our fireworks. We got the best fireworks uh, display in, in Western New York, and uh, it's always been a, a good night, and I know uh, you don't have any problems with it, do you?
No.
Just another five thousand people in town. Um, but yeah, it's uh, the village, thanks the village for letting us use the park and uh, Dave and the highway department for all they do. And Megan and Chris, I mean, they really, really got this thing going pretty good, and I, the firemen, the police department, everyone puts this together, and it is a great event, so. Mark it on your calendars, come, and uh, that's about it for me. So we'll go to audience, and this is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to talk to the board on any item whatsoever. Come on up. Give us your name, please, and your address.
Evening.
You can go right into the mic, yep.
Yeah, I'm Michelle Biella, and I moved here two years ago after leaving here in seventy-seven. And I just wanna thank the town board for your work to make this a great community. And I wanna take the opportunity also to let you know that in addition to Aces, which does good work here and has, I guess, for many years, there is a Cornell Climate Stewards um, class that a number of us have been taking. We've been in a twelve week session. During this time, we've learned about environmental uh, uh, big environmental concerns, but also uh, solutions and things that we can do as municipalities. And so at the end of this twelve weeks, there's pressure on because you need to choose a project. And so um, coming from Wisconsin and being very tied to the land and the environment and also farming, um, I wanted to work on um, some aspect of that. And so um, one of the things that um, my and other, I, I share the project with others, will be to have a group discussion class uh, that centers on uh, it's called Menu for the Future. And it's a positive approach to looking at our lifestyle things and also our options for how we're connected to where our food comes from, and that leads to composting. And so when I saw tonight that you folks were looking at a compost project, um, I thought I would uh, step forward to say that this is near and dear to a lot of our hearts. And it's very doable. I've been studying um, environmental uh, aspects at the University of Wisconsin for about fifteen years. And there they had a huge effort because they had the largest natural resource program in the nation. So people were studying um, all aspects uh, from from farming to paper science to how to manage forests. And so um, I just wanna thank you, and uh, I hope, I look forward to what can happen in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Anybody else? Anybody online? Okay. Staff reports, Brad, anything? Dave?
Yeah, just uh, gonna, once we finish the Fourth of July celebration, I wanna start working on the Open Space Committee's um, redoing of the Hubbard Road in Majors Park. Um, so we are planning on moving towards the cabin. So I told you August, but it looks like it's moving up, so let's say you're different.
There hasn't been any.
Okay.
The troops have not been routed.
Alright, so yeah, I would suspect probably by the third week in July, we should be about ready to take that down, so.
There's a, there's a meeting tomorrow night. Do you know that of Open Space?
No.
Or they're gonna identify the final trail, which I think.
Oh, good, yeah, and then uh, yeah, let them know that we're about ready to start those trails, so uh, as soon as, like I said, the Fourth of July is over, we were gonna build the extrication center for the fire department, but apparently the village has got that on hold right now, so we're gonna move the other project up and then hopefully do their project in August, so that's it.
Thanks, Dave. Shane? Nothing? Liz? Nothing, okay. Motion to approve the abstract.
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Wait a second. Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that is carried, and a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And that is carried. Thank you for coming tonight.